Okay, good morning, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled Board of Selectment meeting. And we are here for following a town meeting that we will touch on later in our agenda, but if we could begin by pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So next would move to public forum for any three minutes on any agenda item. Anyone in the public wishing to be heard, including virtually? No? Okay, so then we get to move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from the June 20th meeting. Any questions or comments? Or I guess I should guess a motion to approve the minutes first?
So moved.
Thanks.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments, corrections? Oh, I had some. Okay. I guess I did have one item under item eight, the discussion regarding disposal of these fire department equipment in 1977 Mack truck. I had, this is just an addition, I believe I had commented and asked affirmed that all necessary equipment had already been moved and the answer was affirmative.
Yes.
So if you could just add that Tracy, but that was my only comment or question. Anybody else?
We're just approving the first set of minutes right now, the regular meeting.
The regular meeting, that's right, June 20th.
Okay.
Twenty second. Okay. June 20th, so hearing nothing further. All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye opposed? No? All right, so good. Then we also have a special meeting on June 27th. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Pretty straightforward. Everybody good? Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Bring us just item number four, Mr. Philly, and we get you one last time.
Yep, one last time.
Under the wire.
That's what we said last time.
Yeah, I was hoping it was.
Come back and visit by all means.
All right. I was approached by Brandon last minute for an update on our chip seal. All right, so again, there's no closure on this as far as what the actual price will be a month from now, which is when we were going to be doing the chip ceiling. But he's at $199, so we were figuring out $2 anyways. He's at $199 square yard. And he went over the roads, I went over the roads, and he actually came up with a less of an amount than I did. And then again, with these roads, like you take East River, it goes from 21 to 40 at one point and like that, so it's random. So with his schedule that he put out here, roughly I could add another road, which I wanted to anyway, so already Flagmarsh Road that would be added. But that would bring us over on my 170,000. So I look back and I actually do have a P O from last year because we didn't use the whole thing. It's P O 39117, 2021. We still have 10,446,042 cents left in it. I'd like to place that in with these roads and that should cover any overage, I'm hoping, as we come, you know, into August, because again, it could go up another penny. I asked him, what do you think's the worst scenario? And he said, well, I really can't tell you because it's been so volatile, but he says that I'm looking at maybe a penny more. So we were in the, we'd be in the $2 range, so which is doable. He also asked if.
That's a question.
Yeah.
I assume you've talked to Mary Jane. I mean, you said you had a purchase order from last year. Is that, those funds been held open like that?
They've been held over.
That's a good question.
Yeah.
All right. You want to buy Mary Jane?
Yes, yes.
Buying these funds?
That's that. I didn't run it by her, you know, because I did this kind of publicly, but I also know that FPOs, you know, it's open.
Okay.
All right, so.
And what was the amount left?
10,000, 10,446,042 cents.
So I guess it would just, we're all having the same thought. I mean, you, you know, hopefully you button this up and you're going to touch base with her.
Oh, definitely, definitely. But this way here puts us above that amount, you know, so we should, we got a little bit of play in there.
It's surplus, but ten.
Yeah. And then, and we actually will be able to get one more road out of it, which is.
So if I understand it from your report that you submitted us, the number that is being proposed today is 170,535 cents. That includes this additional road that you're mentioning.
Yes.
Okay, and that list of roads is on your report to us.
Yes, it is.
Is that the approximate total cost of the Flagmarsh Road?
Total cost?
No, we're adding 10. How much were we saving from the others?
Well, Flagmarsh is 14,150, so we're saving on the other ones. You know, and again, this is not a perfect science to begin with. Most of the time, you know, the thought is overdo it, you know what I mean? So that we cover ourselves.
I just didn't want to be in a situation where we were saving 500 and spent.
No, no, this is really good at this point, if he can hold to this. And another part of it is if he needed, you know, on cost wise, because they were talking about now surcharge on sweepers, you know, their fuel and everything like that. So he was able to come up with this at this point. So he says, but if that came, if that came up, then would I help him with the trucking of the stuff once they swept it? And I said, I would. Anything that would keep the cost down. So the town.
Are all the roads that we're doing, I mean, the sweeping works, there's no question, particularly in neighborhoods where, you know, there may be bicycle users. Are any of the roads fairly rural where the sweeping might not be as necessary? And would there be enough or substantial cost savings to skip the sweeping on roads that are more open and not so much?
On this, yeah.
Now they're all residential.
You can't, because there's always residual stuff that comes up, you know, but that doesn't seat. So no matter what, you have to sweep the roads, and these are all like main roads, you know what I mean? That's why I was putting on here and.
Why don't the sweeping, we had added the sweeping because residential neighborhoods, they was too much loose.
Well, usually in a residential area, you're going to get, because there's not as much travel in there, so you will have more stone left over. These roads here in particular that we put down are well-traveled roads. And last year, when we did the Old New England Road, when I looked at the road after it was swept, because of how much travel is on that road, it was like a perfect map at the end. I was like, wow, this is great, because it's exactly what you wanted to happen.
Meaning the chips all.
Everything's slanted in, yep. So with the right oil, the right time of year, we always do it in August, you know, and I make a point of that because it's the hottest time of year. And so this way here, when we do have to travel, it gets a chance to seat because of the roads of the asphalt's hot. And it seats in, and we went with quarter this time, so the three eighths, so we're not as abrasive, you know, when everybody's worried about it, because my concern on these roads were, these roads are not too bad. So by putting that new oil in, it's going to help rejuvenate these roads for a good amount of time. And so it's not so much about the armoring, which is usually with the three eights. We went to quarter chip. And last year with the quarter chip, even in the residential areas, I got one complaint. That's it, one. So it does work out kind of nice.
Good. So just so that we said it, people certainly look at this, but we're talking about Westlake Road, Schoolside Road, Horseshoe Road, Davis Road, East River Road, and now Flagmarsh as well.
Yep.
And various square, total square yards. Okay.
Okay.
Wonderful.
How many miles is that total?
Well, about five and a half miles, which comes out.
Okay. And there's already, I would also point out, there's already an asphalt adjustment factored into this price, but you've made it clear a number of times that that is a variable depending on what happens with low prices between now and the time of delivery.
Right, so now we've got another month to go. So again, before we actually chip the road, so, okay. That's where we're, you know, we're, this is his best he can do. I mean, and it is the best he can do as far.
So what do we need a motion to?
Yeah, we need.
To adjust it. I'll move this. Very good.
Second.
Hey, further discussion from the members of the board? All in favor of the proposal submitted by Mr. Philly? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you so much. Best of luck. I was going to save this till later, but we all got a memo from Mitch Goldblatt that David Castro will be the new Public Works Director after this.
Yeah.
I'm sure you guys work together.
Yeah.
So wonderful. Thank you so much for all your hard work and service.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
It was a pleasure.
Appreciate it.
Right, thanks.
Take care.
Okay, next item, item five, we need to discuss and take possible actions. A public hearing date of Monday, July 18th at 8:30. Sorry?
I'm sorry, I was out of track.
Techno issue. So we need to discuss and take action to set a public hearing date of Monday, July 18th at 8:30 at the Town Hall and via Zoom to receive public comment on an ATV ordinance and amended noise control ordinance. All right, so can I have a motion to set that date?
Take care, Tracy. I'll make a motion to set the date. Second.
Comments, questions?
Yeah, we have an opportunity.
I, I had exactly the same thought. I'm presuming we're going to see what's being proposed. So far, we've been asked to set a date for that.
Right, we're not going to be voting on it that day, right? We're just.
No, but it would still be nice to know what's coming before the public, which I'm sure we'll get before then.
Right.
Pete's given a high sign here, so we have that information.
Yeah, we have drafts of both of those. I want to run the noise control ordinance with Chief Hyatt. And the other one we have in draft, I just need to finalize it. I should be able to post those, I would think, Thursday or Friday, and we'll get those to you by email.
The thought about the date is that amending the noise control ordinance is something that kind of affects everybody in town, and people should have more of a chance to weigh in on it. People can't attend an 8:30 AM meeting very easily, so without knowing what it is, I don't know if that's appropriate. I mean, if it's eight.
Is there any sort of time crunch on this, Pete?
There's no time crunch on it, no.
Okay. Maybe we could take a look at it before setting the meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. All right, so I'll have this for you, like I say, Thursday, and if you want, you can, you know, defer on that. We've got the same situation with the ATV ordinance.
Okay, so I guess under that circumstance, we maybe need a subsequent motion to table this date to another, to another date. That's not going to cause any disruption? Again, Pete's.
The ATV one, I think.
I think the ATV, they wanted to get, get that going.
That's problematic already.
Okay.
Might want to coax it along a little bit if we could.
So there are two separate ordinances, Pete?
Yeah.
Can you give us the gist?
In fact, I'm here today, so I'll be working on that shortly. Well, the ATV, we're just, you know, we've got a model from North Branford that seems to be, you know, working people likes, who are really just tuning that up for Guilford. The noise ordinance is really just to restrict a little bit more the construction noise. We had done this, please, I want to say two years ago, and it was very broad and with, ended up withdrawing that ordinance. So this is a lot more narrow in the change that it's going to propose. And it's for basically weekend construction is going to be reduced by hours.
Okay. So I guess my thoughts on this are, these are, you know, the whole point is to have a public hearing to comment on these things. And we can set another date when we're actually voting on it. So I don't know that that meeting on the 18th is irrevocable, and people can zoom in.
Right.
So I mean, I do appreciate the early morning, but most of our meetings are early. We occasionally have a night meeting.
Sure, so we hold a hearing, and then if we feel that it's something that we need to go on or whatever, then we can defer our vote.
Right.
Yeah, I'll just say that is typically, you know, what we do, the public hearing, and a lot of times you folks are ready to vote on it, and you will, but there's no requirement that you do. So if we had a packed house, a lot of people were, had things to say about it, certainly you might want to defer a vote on it. But, you know, if you want to get the public hearing part done on the 18th, the ordinances will be posted well in advance of that.
And the other value is having the public hearing can stir the pot a little bit. I mean, people let realize that we are planning to deal with this and that want some input to deal with it. I think that's a good point, that we don't have to vote on it that day, but we can certainly start the public hearing process, whether we finish it that day or not, we are discretion.
Sounds good. Any other thoughts? Good. So we have a motion in a second to set the public hearing date for July 18th on two separate ordinances, an ATV ordinance and amended noise control ordinance. That's what's, move the seconded, and for the comment, all in favor of setting that date? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? Thank you. Okay. So this is actually something that I noticed that had come up previously. We have a item six now, discuss and take possible action on proposed tax abatement program. We have a draft affordable housing tax abatement application and a draft tax abatement agreement. So can I get a motion to advance these two documents? Really what they are are the administrative documents.
Yeah.
That, and Pete's got his hand up again, but let me just get a motion first, and then we can, we can go on. So to get a motion to.
So moved.
So, okay, thanks. Pete?
Yeah, it doesn't really require action. Matt, just in his absence, asked, just as an FYI, since we have these drafts to share them with you folks so that you'd see what we're doing. There's no pending application. We do expect one by your next Board of Selectment meeting, though.
And one, you mean a completed version of one of these forms, an agreement, proposed agreement and an application?
Well, right, but the agreement will, that's right, the applicant will propose something, but we won't, we won't prepare the agreement until after your vote, because the extent of the tax abatement is up to you folks.
I see. And I, and I did, as I said, I did notice we had, we had discussed this back in January, and, you know, had advanced the ordinance at that point. So, I mean, it does this big possible action. So you're saying we don't necessarily have to approve these forms?
No, no, and I actually was not expecting any action. I do have Karen Kravitz and an attorney from her office, Tom Kusa, who had, I had pulled in Affordable Housing Experience. If you have any questions on what you have in front of you, but they'll also be present for the, for the application that you'll hear next time around.
So, yeah, I mean, I did look through that, and I saw Tom on the Zoom. Thanks for attending this morning. I mean, the application itself looks pretty straightforward. A lot of blanks, as you would expect for the applicant to fill in. And then the agreement, it sounds like the agreement itself would also be subject to the particulars of what an applicant would be submitting and would be tuned to that. Is that fair?
That's right. And in fact, what you have in front of you, I think, has sort of some sample language, but not necessarily what you would, you know, vote on.
Okay.
That's subject to change.
Good. So I get the, the opportunity once again to sort of back out of a motion that we have. We don't need an emotion. You're just giving a heads up. This is the draft of the forms that are going to be used when the moment comes, and we'll get an opportunity to vote on that in future.
That's, that's right. And it's that whole, you know, the whole affordable housing initiative and, and the rules around, you know, making sure that affordable housing units are counted towards the threshold that we're trying to obtain.
Got it. Okay. So, so we were talking about it. Any other questions? Anybody? We're good. All right, so I guess we can have an agreement to withdraw the motion. Whoever made it, Sandy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Sorry, yes.
Do you want Karen to, since she's on, do you want her to sort of outline what the process is?
That'd be great.
All right, why don't you do that, Karen?
Okay, so the first thing is that if somebody wants to present an affordable housing project for your approval, the first thing they need to do is go get any town approvals that are required zoning inland wetlands, anything of that nature. Before they come to the Board of Selectment, it should basically be a done deal. So they're going to have their federal or their state funding most likely, and they're going to have all of their town approvals. Then they're going to present you with an application. And the application is going to lay out the project to show you how it meets the affordability requirements of the ordinance, to show you what the proposed tax payment is. And as Peter said, that's up to the Board of Selectmen. The ordinance does not mandate any particular abatement. We have a proposed standard that we think would be the best for the Board of Selectmen to target and, but would have discretion to change it depending on the nature of the project. Keeping in mind that some of these projects are going to be rental projects, that the developer and owner will continue to own and as apartments. And some of these projects will be homeownership projects where the developer will sell them to a homeowner, and you'll be dealing with the homeowner going forward on the affordability and the land use restriction. So there are going to be different kinds of projects that come in front of you that might require some discretion. And so they're going to present you with an application, they're going to present you with their funding source, and their funding requirements and conditions on affordability. They're going to present you with their town approvals, and they're going to present you with the proposed tax payment, payment, what the taxes would be with no abatement, and what they're going to use the abatement proceeds essentially for. So the town will have that information and will understand where their, the tax savings that the town is offering are going to move forward affordability in the town. So that's the nuts and bolts of the application. They also will tell you the enforcement mechanism, which typically will be from the funding source and something the town can rely on as opposed to having to engage in its own enforcement and monitoring system. And so our goal is to design this so that it promotes the town's interests in assisting affordable housing developments, but it keeps the town's administrative burden to a minimum. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. Our thought is that the assessor's office will handle these as they handle other abatements that are already existing. And are, we're going to prepare a worksheet for the assessor's office to figure out what the taxes are with the abatement and to document that. And then also an annual form that'll be similar to the income and expense forms that go out to apartment currently or to investment properties or the personal property declarations, a form of that nature that will be under oath, that will require certification every year that they have met the income requirements that were agreed to.
Okay, very helpful.
Thank you.
Any, does that spur any further questions?
No.
Come on. Okay, well, thanks, Pete, Karen, Thomas, for bringing all this to us, and we look forward to the next step.
Okay, very good. Thanks, everybody.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yep, bye-bye.
We have a letter and a capital lease from the Board of Education Business Manager, Linda Trudell. Oh, there we go. Hi, Linda.
Good morning.
I didn't notice you before. Good to see you.
Good to see all of you.
I always feel like we should have a motion first, and then we'll let the presentation. So can I have a motion to approve this capital lease? Is that what we do with Board of Ed stuff? Or is it just taking the report?
I think we ought to get presented before we do a motion.
All right, so Linda, why don't you tell us what's happening?
Okay, so as we've done in the past, we're going to be entering into another capital lease. This lease will be for $575,000 for various technology equipment and a new facilities truck. As you know, the Board of Ed can't enter into debt, so I do need your authorization to enter into this capital lease. You will have to approve the resolution that was sent to you. So the Board of Ed hasn't awarded the lease yet to a specific vendor, but we only had one bidder on the lease, which was J.P. Morgan. The other equipment, other company that we've been using, TD Equipment Financing, is no longer doing these types of leases. So the lease is $575,000 at a rate of 3.35% with an annual payment of $122,779. And that is, that is under the amount that I had budgeted for this payment. I had budgeted $123,767. So this payment will still be under budget from what I had estimated.
Are all of these under one lease?
I'm sorry?
Are all of these under one lease?
Yes.
I'm surprised a vehicle is in there, because they usually have these special deals with vehicles and stuff, but.
We actually get a better interest rate if we do it this way.
Okay.
If we were to do a lease, even a lease to own, the interest rate was much higher, so we found that this was a better way for us to finance.
Okay, so you've looked into it. It just, it seems like it's different than the other equipment, I mean, computers and that type of thing. So that's good. Okay.
Yeah, I, we actually worked with the attorney from Shipman and Goodwin, or Shipman, I guess it is now, Matt Ritter. And he said that this is completely acceptable, and it is the better way to finance it at a lower interest rate and save us some money.
And all of this is under control of Mary Jane and that type of, well, this is Board of Ed, so.
Well, because we can't enter into debt on our own, we need your approval. I do the, the funding request from the lease, but Mary Jane also has to sign off on all these lease documents.
The town is the coal, the coal SE.
And then you're bringing this to the Board of Finance presumably on the next, does it go to the Board of Finance as well?
It goes to the Board of Ed. It doesn't usually go to the Board of Finance. I, the, I just need the Board of Selectmen's approval to enter into lease.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, sounds good. And so we're moving to approve resolution for the capital lease that's been presented to us in the amount of $575,000. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Any further discussion from the board? Anything further, Linda?
No.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, all in favor of that motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? That passes. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Have a good day.
Mr. Gurnum, you have a couple of items.
Good morning.
All right.
So we, we do have quite a few, several items on the agenda. The first one is, we're looking for approval for the Construction Administration for the Cox HVACU project, which is underway. We got a proposal from the engineer of record, which is Silver Petrocelli and Associates. That proposal was reviewed by the Standing Building Committee and recommended being awarded the work in the amount of $22,500.
Just tell us a little bit again, I think we've touched on this in the past, but just tell us what a construction administrator does in this context.
They help oversee the project, ensure that the work is done according to the bid specifications. So, and they also help file any paperwork that's necessary. So they, they review all the payment applications, change orders and that type of thing, and then they make a recommendation whether or not to approve it and move forward with it to the Standing Building Committee.
Okay, so this is not the actual project, it's the administration oversight of the project?
Correct, yes.
Where, where do we stand with that project?
It just started, so it kicked off last week.
Okay, and that, the actual HVAC project will also be funded through the bond. You make reference to the bond referendum. It's the 2019-20 that has a current balance of $777,000?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay, I got it.
Cliff. And entering into this contract, I know we've had discussions in the past of other projects where we struggled with issues that came up later on and whose responsibility it had been to catch. Uh issues that came up later on and whose responsibility it had been to catch and or foresee. Things in particular projects. Ha, is this still basically a a contract similar to those in the past? Or have we addressed that issue at all at this point in time?
Uh kind of two parts, uh we have addressed the the piece that you're talking about, uh because we have a commissioning agent already lined up on this project. So the uh engineer of records, Silver Petrocelli, will be working with the commissioning agent as well as the contractor, uh Sabre. To ensure that uh everything is done correctly, um and so we have the commissioning agent. That's essentially uh double checking everything and ensuring that everything functions.
Okay, so we've, we've sought to address that issue, okay.
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um. So I guess we need a motion to approve this uh hiring of Silver Petrocelli for my two thousand five hundred hours to be the construction administrator.
Uh, do you have one more question?
Okay.
Well, I'll move it and you second it and then we.
Okay. Good, thanks, Andy.
The, how does this twenty-two thousand five hundred? Uh how are these types of contracts calculated, are they percentage of the cost of the overall project or is it like a standard fee for for?
Uh it's based upon uh really the administration uh of the project and how much work is required. Uh a large portion of it is based upon the number of site visits, so we require a request that the engineer be onsite a minimum of uh once a week. To review the uh progress, um so it's kind of based on that and the amount of paperwork expected uh during the project itself.
And I, has, is twenty-two thousand five hundred compared to previous projects similar or are we seeing increases? Like across the board anyway in in all of these types of things? Is this generally a number that fits historically or are we seeing increases in even these types of fees?
Now, this is is uh pretty level uh from past uh contracts that we've had, not just with Silver, but with the other. Associations and firms like uh Antonazi and and a couple others that we use, so uh we have not seen a major change in that cost.
Okay, thank you.
I guess, I guess my question that prompted me to think is um. Is this the upper amount that they could charge, I mean, is this the full amount or they, is this sort of an amount that they would eventually be billing up to? They spend less time, would it cost us less than twenty-two five thousand, like what's the, what's the parameters of this agreement?
It it's a fixed price versus a not to exceed price um based upon the scope that we developed um from the project itself and the requirements that we gave them, so.
Oh, like fixed fee, so if it ends up costing them ten or twelve hours longer, we're in for twenty-two thousand five hundred?
Correct, yep.
Okay.
I'm ready to vote.
Any else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, motion passes, thank you. Next, you mentioned Antonazi Associates, they're next on your agenda, Cliff, why don't you tell us what's happening there?
So the next project we're looking at is the Melissa Jones Media Center renovation project uh that will be kicking off this summer. Uh we received a proposal from Antonazi uh to uh essentially help us redesign the Cox uh Media Center. They are on the on-call list, that's where we went to, we've had uh good success with them in the past.
But, but you, first you said Melissa Jones, but it says it's Cox, right?
It is Cox, I'm sorry.
That's all right, no, you said, you said both, so I just wanted to be sure.
Okay, so, correct, it's uh the Cox Media Center, sorry about that.
That's right.
Um Antonazi is on the on-call list, so uh so uh we've had the Standing Building Committee uh review the proposal and they recommended moving forward with them. In the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred dollars. So this pr- project will take place pretty much over the next six months with the design. And then we hope to go to bid uh for the work probably in December.
How come, um it says that this is funded through a bond referendum from fifteen sixteen, did it just, what happened? Was this supposed to happen in fifteen sixteen or sixteen seventeen?
No, we obviously, in each of our uh bonds, we have funding for future engineering. Uh so this is just a future project, so uh we're just using those funds, that's all, yep.
Okay. Yeah.
Do we have a? Uh in that bond. What is the total dollar value of this project?
Uh.
Hang on.
Right here, so we presently bonded uh in the amount of. Um eighty-two thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars. Uh however, uh we do expect that the scope may change some uh during the design. Um originally, we were just looking at trying to rearrange and replace the furniture. But it makes more sense after working with the principal and the media specialist to look further into some of the technology that's within the. Library itself or Media Center itself, uh enhance that while we do the project, uh so. Uh we'll see, once we do the full design, what the overall cost of the project comes back at, but but right now we have eighty-two thousand dollars. Uh based uh for that project or set aside.
Again, twenty-five percent of the total project for design is within normal parameters?
Uh again, um I would say it's a little bit high, but I think our number for the the work on the project is low, I think you'll find out once we. Get an updated design that the the cost is is probably going to be more towards uh over a hundred or a hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, so if we've bonded approximately eighty and the project may turn into close to double.
Mm-hmm.
Where does the additional number come from?
So once we're done designing, uh again, uh over the next six months, the the overall plan, uh we will come back and request additional funding if we're. Um if that design is higher than the initial cost, that's part of the problem when we do the projects and we haven't designed it first. And we don't have uh an actual. Really solid construction cost, we'll say, uh so normally what I try to do is to design first a year in advance and then come for the bonding, but. Uh we packaged it uh early last year uh with that bond.
To Sandy's point, this truly is problematic, I mean, we back in. When we approved, when the voters approved the bonding, they had one, they were presented with one set of numbers, which obviously. You know, because of everything, I mean, just the way the economy is going, everything, this is substantially. Changed to the point of doubling and it almost sounds like, you know, we. We owe it to the taxpayers to go back with the project to bond. I, you know, this is a financial issue, not an issue from your perspective as far as getting the design done, but. Uh I think it's something during budget season we ought to look at, including in bonds, projects that are this far in. In the future without even having a a design concept in place and asking the taxpayers to approve something. That is at point is a pipe dream.
And that's, you know, that's where we've actually really tried to change, um. You know, especially with the larger projects, we've tried to change that whole process uh and go for it, and that's why we have that future uh. Uh bond uh piece in our bonds for future design work, uh so that when possible, we try to design. The project upfront a year ahead of time so that when we do go to bond, I have a solid number as far as the cost.
I think we, during, I, I don't want to sidetrack this this particular issue today, but I think during budget season, we ought to take a harder look at at how we. Uh put together bond packages, so, okay.
So, and and it's an excellent point, um and but it sounds like what it's going to happen is almost precisely that, th- this way we'll get the design and the proposal. And we'll have an opportunity, we'll get hard number, harder numbers anyway, nothing's ever rock anymore. Uh on, on what it will cost and frankly, we and maybe everybody else gets a chance to. So to say whether they're going to approve the proposal or not, but at least we'd have a design at that point. I did have one other question or comment, unless anybody else did, I looked at, so I noticed that their um proposal, these are the uh the the. Architects really, one of their items, um they're gonna, they're gonna. They're gonna have approved schematic design drawings, they'll prepare the furniture package, including architectural drawings. Item five on their list is insulation phase of the project, they'll review shop drawings and submittals as required, so to a certain extent, it sounds like they will also be acting. As the sort of the, similar to the last project, they'll be the the administrator of the project, right? We're not going to need a construction administrator here, will we?
No, this is all built in uh from start to finish.
Okay, so they're going to be fulfilling that role in this case?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, I just have one question too, I like to look at the comments from the Standing Building Committee, and I just didn't see their approval on this, was it at their June meeting? That they voted on this?
Oh, uh no, what they did was they did a uh vote, uh email vote uh on this, they're gonna do a in-meeting uh.
Okay.
Uh approval at tonight's uh meeting, because we're kind of flip-flopped, um you'll see, there's another one tonight or today where we're asking for you to approve it. Um and they have not made that email and or uh a meeting vote on it. Um but we'll, we're going to ask for you to approve it on it based upon um their approval for tonight. So continuation upon their, so this one here, we had the email vote, uh so we know we have approval from them, uh but you won't see it in the minutes, uh you'll see it for tonight's meeting.
So it sounds like we need an amendment to the motion that the motion would, our motion.
Oh, we said this one they have voted on.
Correct.
You know, both.
Oh, there wasn't even.
There weren't coming.
Just hasn't shown up on the minutes yet, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
It's the next one that.
Okay. Okay, so the motion we have is to approve the hiring of Antonosi for this purpose as set forth in Mr. Guernam's notes, it's seconded, any further discussion? Thoughts, okay, everybody all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, no, thank you, motion passes, Cliff, you, you're three of four right now, so.
Uh so the next one we have is the uh Baldwin Security Enhancement Project. This is a pilot project uh that was discussed uh with the Standing Building Committee at their June seventh meeting. Um it's been reviewed by the uh Superintendent Assistant Superintendent, um and it will enhance uh many of the operating systems that we have in the building. Uh so we're looking to move forward with this project and award it under uh two separate uh state contracts, uh one's a source well contracting, the other one's a PP or P E P P M contract. Um and we're looking to award it uh to Eastern Datacom, the amount of two hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixteen cents. Okay.
Can we have a? I'll move it so we can talk about it.
Second.
Uh, special, thanks.
So this is for Baldwin. Okay, how many more school, I mean, the high school must be up to speed, have the latest and the best. How many more schools are going to need enhanced or improved? Security equipment?
Uh I would say we're going to be doing the other uh five schools, um and we may do some portions of this uh in the high school, but not to this extent. Because the high school has much newer equipment, so a lot of the systems that we're touching on to enhance, like the phone system, PA system, lockdown systems, things of that nature. Um you know, some of that's newer obviously at the high school, but when you look at Baldwin, a lot of that uh equipment's antiquated and needs to be replaced, so.
Yeah, I mean, maybe, may- maybe I'm dating myself, I'm sure I am dating myself, but. It seems to me. We have, it's just like typical computer equipment, you get a five or ten year lifespan, I guess it probably has, but I'm trying to think back when we first. Installed most of the the security in in most of the schools, it was after.
Sandy Hook.
Some, one of the tragedies, right, which I guess now is five or ten years.
Sandy Hook was twenty-twelve, so it's.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, Dave, I'm trying to figure out how old some of this equipment were, I guess, you know.
But much of the stuff that we have, again, that's why it's an enhancement to what we have, it's not replacing what we have, it's improving uh on what we have.
Well, I'm just. I'm looking at, you know, quarter of a million dollars times five now.
Correct, yeah, uh but again, it will vary from school to school based upon the age of the, some of the equipment that we're looking at revisiting.
I, no, it's unfortunately necessary and, you know, I, like I said, I, we moved it and you have to go forward, but.
Well, it, this sounds like it's, it's very technical, very involved and very sensitive. And in the minutes from the Standing Building Committee, I'm seeing, if the Standing Building Committee agrees that this project should move forward, they will be moving forward with meetings with the Board of Ed, or the Selectment Police Department and Fire Department. Um, you know, making sure that everything integrates together and so on, is there a plan for doing all that at this point, or is this just the first step?
It's one of the the first steps, uh you know, again, we have met with the Superintendent Assistant Superintendent, the Standing Building Committee, um. I don't recall if the full board event uh we met with them on the whole topic, I'd have to go back and look at the minutes from last month, but.
I mean, their recommendation was sort of, it seems like it's conditional upon doing this. Wouldn't want it to get into one of those situations where everyone thinks, you know, because somebody else approved it, it's all good to go, it seems like it. You know, kind of goes beyond just upgrading equipment, it's much more involved than that, right?
Well, anytime we make an enhancer, we obviously discuss it, um you know, with the fire and police to make sure that we're not creating any adverse, you know, situations uh that. They can see or that they're aware of, uh that's why we pass everything through, much of this project, um because it has to do with technology versus physical changes to the school. Um. We're pretty certain they'll support, you know, any enhancements uh that will improve, uh you know, our safety to the students and and the. The staff.
I'm all in favor of going ahead with it, I just want to make sure that all the steps that the Standing Building Committee recommended are followed, really as far as vetting it, making sure it all works.
Correct, we just, you know, it was uh unfortunately impossible for us to get every single one of the committees in prior to your meeting again. So we're trying to push along because we're trying to get this done over the summer. So, um, you know, all the parties.
Pursues point though, I mean, this is, and 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 basically implicit in what you said as well, Cliff, is that this isn't just installing phones and speakers, it's sort of. Revising and coordinating the security systems at the school, which are a multi-department issue, right? Police and fire, your department, you know, obviously, we should certainly be aware of all that, and 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 I'm balancing what I'm saying by against the thought that. To a certain extent, when you're dealing with security issues, you know, I'm not so sure necessarily, every, every single last detail needs to be discussed publicly, but somebody needs to understand it. And coordinate it and make sure that's happening, so there's a lot of moving parts here. Um and I appreciate the urgency of getting things done over the summer and the purchase, but I do really echo. Sue's thoughtful question that. It sounds like there's a lot more information that needs to be exchanged. And 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 I guess we'd be interested to know what the plan is, I mean, in terms of the purchase, it makes sense, it sounds like this is necessary, we get it. But I'd be interested to know what the plan is.
To even carry that further, I mean, you know, we're committed to a particular prod- product here. And I'm assuming that product. Has been vetted, and I mean, I I I don't know particular brands and that type of thing, but, you know, I would. To coordinate this across all of the schools, all of the emergency services departments and everything, I hope that we're. If we we approve this, that we're committing to this Miteller equipment or whatever, I hope that's the right equipment.
Yeah. A- and the IT department has been uh part of this whole design since the day one, so that's the more critical piece. Um because there's so much technology involved, uh so, uh and.
So and you feel confident that they compared it to other equipment and the equipment that's used in other system, school systems and that type of thing.
Correct.
I, I didn't. I I don't wanna start micromanaging here, but.
No, I agree with that, but this is the whole lockdown system, essentially.
Yeah, if this is the first of five. You know, we don't wanna.
Cliff, what happens if this doesn't happen this week?
We'll come back to you again, I mean, just slows down the project, so the project will have to happen during school uh in the fall, that's all. Which gets complicated, because if you take a phone line, uh phone system offline in a school. Obviously creates different, you know, potential safety issues.
Well, how how do we know, even if we prove it, it's gonna happen, I mean, it seems to me we're in an environment where anything involving. Computer components could potentially be delayed significantly, as we hear about.
Coordination at the other departments.
A- and that's why we're we're, the biggest thing was obviously trying to get you guys to approve it, so that we can secure the equipment itself. Um, and sure, once we have the equipment. Secured, then we know we can get the project done, but if we don't get approval today, and so we wait until August. Not only are we not gonna get the equipment, but there's no way for us to physically actually get it installed.
So so I guess this keep, we keep coming back to the same point, that the Standing Building Committee has already reviewed and approved this equipment out of the. Various possible alternatives.
Uh, we only presented them with this alternative after reviewing it between uh the Facilities Department and the I T Department.
How many other? Uh, brands of equipment? Did you compare?
Uh, I believe the I T looked at a couple of different phone systems, uh and P A systems, I'm not involved with those systems as much. I know some of the systems that we have, uh you know, Simplex and a couple of the other ones. So, uh unfortunately, the ones like Simplex, we are trying to get away from. Uh, just because we've had so many past problems and and the cost to maintain them, so.
Do you know of other school systems that have used this particular equipment that's being recommended?
Uh, yes, uh they did give us a list, I'd have to pull up those notes, but it has been installed in various other school systems, yes.
And you feel that the I T department has contacted those school systems and have gotten positive reactions?
Yeah, I believe they also gave us letters uh in the package they gave us originally.
Okay, I I don't wanna start micromanaging, but it's just, you know, the fact that this is a quarter of a million dollars and it's the first of potentially five. You know, uh. I I think it merits some investigation, it sounds like the Standing Building Committee agrees that it requires some investigations. And if they passed it thinking that they can get all of this done, or maybe some of it has been done, it sounds like. You know, the I T and standing building have done some legwork here. I I am still prepared to move forward, because I do think this security is. You know, can't mess around with that.
And these are systems that need to be replaced no matter what, you know, the phone system, the P A system, the phone system at Baldwin uh has been a nightmare all. All year, so we've been working with the principal up there, uh trying to keep that system running. Uh, over the past year, uh knowing that we're looking into these enhancements.
I mean, like I just say, I I'm all in favor of moving. It forward and keeping our equipment to the best that it uh we can afford and that it can be at this point in time. And I'm prepared to depend on on the other departments and commissions and doing their jobs, but I I do wanna send the message that. You know, we're not gonna like surprises in a year or two.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I know I'm repeating myself, but it's it doesn't look like a green light from the Standing Building Committee. They want you to get input, and is there input from the Board of Education, the Fire Department, the Police Department, it sounds like those steps have not been done. And that that being the case, I'm not prepared to vote on it, I guess I would abstain, I just, I just don't know enough about this to be able to vote.
Again, you know, the superintendent's already approved this. And has recommended moving forward with it. So the only two that we haven't touched base with, uh essentially, are the um fire and police. Um, and again, I don't see them having much input on it, but we run stuff by them, so they know what we're doing. And understand how our systems work, because obviously they're responding to our. Our uh.
How can you say that the fire and police don't have much input?
The whole point of this.
In this type of system, I mean, what are they gonna do? Tell us that the phone system, they don't like our type of phone system?
Is this a phone?
That it doesn't work with their system.
They don't have a system in our building, it's all based upon what we built.
I- is it a phone system, or is it an emergency lockdown safety system? I mean, there's a lot of discussion in here about taking the human element out if there's an emergency that requires a lockdown.
Right, but that's, we already, we already have a a lockdown system, it enhances that, right now, our lockdown system. Only uses one piece of uh. One system, this will tie all our systems together, our P A system together, our lockdown system together. Uh, the phone system together, uh it will give us the ability to. Uh, broadcast in different manners throughout the school, uh when we're having different situations, whether it's a lockdown, fire, reverse evacuation. Um, any one of our uh potential threats.
Okay, and I appreciate that, but when the Standing Building Committee was presented with this, they didn't say, oh, okay, that all sounds great, go ahead with it. They said you need more input, and if if that, and if we're expected to rely upon their recommendation, they're not really giving us a recommendation. To go forward now, that's how I read this.
Uh, yeah, and not only that, I I keep coming back, I mean, the the, and I'm just, the list of, the list of. Town organizations that need to really be, it'd be interested to know, to make sure we have I T and facilities, leisure facilities, I T. Police, fire, and the Board of Ed, I I might, my my feeling is, this is, and Charles. This isn't a two hundred fifty thousand dollars, this is potentially a million three. That's that's at issue here, once we start down this path of this equipment, it would seriously not make sense to switch. To, I think, just at the ten thousand foot queue, to other equipment at any of the other buildings, I mean, the uniformity's gotta make some sense. So if this is the.
Compatibility.
If this is the proposal, it would be really helpful to see the spreadsheet of who signed off and why, and that we've understood all.
Or at least make sure that the people doing job have done that, to Susan's point, that they have checked off on it, I mean. I'm not gonna sit here and look at spreadsheets.
I know I've seen the detailed standing building minutes, but in the letter to Matt from Cliff, it says. The Standing Building Committee received presentation along with reviewing proposals from Eastern Datacom. And unanimously recommended moving forward with this project. The the Standing Building Committee minutes are attached to last month's order financing. Okay. And there's a, there's a lot more discussion than that, that that's not how I, I I respectfully disagree with that interpretation of their action.
And that's the only, that, those minutes from last month from the Standing Building Committee, Cliff, that's the last comment from that?
Correct, we mean again tonight, but uh, yes.
So.
I would be prepared to, you know, let the Standing Building Committee know our feelings. Tonight, I and I would be prepared to have a special meeting, even if it was an email meeting. To deal with this, because I think Cliff has got a valid point that. You know, this is an important enough issue to make sure it moves forward in a timely manner, and I would be more than happy to. To reaffirm Standing Building Committee's position on this and have a special meeting, even if it is. Let's say Tuesday, even if it's tomorrow morning, or the next morning or something, I I think this is an important enough issue that that. We we should have a special meeting so that we don't hold up on it, but to Susan's point. Let's have the people who are supposed to be dot need, eyes are crossed and a t's, do that and and give us uh. You know, more confidence in in moving forward.
Okay, so I understand that, and that would be in the motion we have on. Uh, before us, um this, in a sense, we should need to table it to a subsequent vote.
Yeah, I mean, Cliff, does that make some sense to us, you know, because we just need a little more uh.
It's just time, you know, uh unfortunately, we have so many projects running and coordinating with so many different departments. That uh I I can easily do that, that's that's not an issue, I'd be more than happy to to.
So what what.
And get back to you, you know, probably Thursday uh or Friday, and and have a a a meeting to review uh further details.
Definitely set up a meeting later this week, and I should say, so we'd need a motion to table, if that's where our thought is here.
I'll make that motion in a second.
Okay, so on uh in favor, any discussion on the motion table, you need that, all in favor? I agree, and it will uh. Once we get some indication following tonight's meeting, Cliff, you'll get back to us and we'll do what we need to do to schedule another meeting to address this.
Absolutely.
Okay, and we're gonna make sure we've heard from each of the departments or.
I think the other point, Cliff, uh, you know, you can convey to the building committee tonight that. You know, we basically, or I personally basically support the concept of moving forward and enhancing. All of our security systems throughout the school, but I I do wanna be confident in that whatever path we start. Now is the right path, and so we are, I think we're generally supportive of moving forward with enhancing. Security within our schools, that's the point I wanted to make.
Uh, that that is, I believe is the tenor of the discussion here, and there's no question, we just wanna make sure that once we get started down this path. Which is an important and expensive path, that everybody's on board. Okay.
And just to, because because I um admit I have not read the Standing Building Committee July, June seventh minutes. Your concern is that they had concerns, that you don't think are fully answered, and that's what Cliff's gonna go back with tonight, yes.
Makes sense. Okay, so that's been tabled, and Cliff, get back to us, um and then we'll see about scheduling another meeting.
He has one more thing.
Yeah, no, gotcha.
This one, this one, Charlie said it's a playground.
It's a playground, sounds like a lot more fun.
We had, we had quite a few issues about this last time too, but anyway, I think it'll be fine today.
Go ahead, Cliff.
Okay, so yes, uh, we're moving forward with the Guilford Lakes Playground Replacement Project. Uh, this proposal that we're moving forward today with is really to award the site work. Uh, to B P, uh B M P Construction. Uh, we're doing that or through the EZ I Q C program or Gordian program, which we have used in a a number of times. Uh, for, you know, projects similar to this. This proposal now, uh again, has not been reviewed by the Standing Building Committee. However, it's on the agenda for tonight, this is the project that I always mentioned before, that. We're looking for approval contingent upon the Standing Building Committee's approval at tonight's meeting. So, yes, we are kind of working backwards, only because of time, um, you know, we can't wait, obviously, another month. Uh, there's the option to table this again, and and if we have a special meeting, you could do it at that meeting as well, if you don't feel comfortable doing the. Award contingent upon the Standing Building Committee's approval, uh but we were looking to have you uh awarded uh contingent. On S B C approval to uh B M P Construction in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. And that's coming out of uh our bond referendum from twenty-two, twenty-three, which uh presently has a balance of two hundred fifty-three thousand dollars left.
Yeah, I will move that we pass this contingent on Standing Building Committee approving it this evening. Uh, you say it's on their agenda this evening, right?
Correct, yes.
I'll I'll move it, I do have a question, or after somebody said.
I'll second that.
Okay, thanks, go ahead.
Okay, uh. So the one sixty-eight is for the site work. Or is that for the total now?
That's just for the site work, so uh that's demolition of the old playgrounds.
My memory on what the equipment costs then?
Uh, we approved the equipment costs um of sixty-eight thousand, I think it was, or there approximately for the. Uh, pre K A K playground. And then.
Sixty-eight for equipment, one sixty for the site work.
Correct, and then there's an additional amount that the P T O is paying directly for the. Um, grades, uh I think it's two through four, um playground piece.
But this site work includes that.
Correct.
Preparation.
Preparation, yes, does.
And repaving that entire asphalt area where the basketball hoop is now?
Correct, yes.
So we're gonna lose the map of the U S?
Somebody's gonna have to repaint that one, yes, yep, unfortunately.
Good project for somebody, but that that asphalt needs doing, so.
Okay, so we got two fifty in there, and it's going to cost us somewhere in the two thirty range. Is that a fair assessment of this whole?
Uh, I believe the two fifty already has deducted out the sixty-eight thousand.
Fifty is a balance half to the sixty-eight.
Correct.
So there's gonna be seventy left in there.
So the equipments for the preschool playground has been purchased already, or at least submitted.
Correct, yes, it has, yep.
Oh, that's helpful.
The original bomb was for three hundred and twenty-five thousand for this project, so.
Okay, so it's continued, but just to be clear, this is contingent on the approval of the Standing Ben- Yes, Building Committee, yes, as submitted in your letter, so thanks. Cliff, okay, anybody have questions, thoughts? You're on track, I have one, you're on tr- this will be on track for all this work to be done? This this demolition, grading, paving, all that will be done by the beginning of school?
Correct, uh, the only piece that will not be completed, unfortunately, is the actual install of the playground itself. Uh, they are, just like everything else, to lead in getting the materials. Uh, so we expect the the install itself for the two playgrounds to be somewhere between uh September and October. Depending on when it comes in.
But the demo, the old equipment's gonna be out, the paving's gonna be done, the the area will be available for. People to walk on.
Correct, uh, there's a lot of coordination going on scheduling wise, so uh we're actually holding, we're gonna. Uh, the the two new areas for where the new placecapes will be all prepped and ready to take the two new placecapes. Um, and then we won't actually tear out the two old ones, um until the new ones arrive. Uh, so that they have a place to utilize uh during the September, October. You know, months. So then the contractor comes back, once the new one's installed, and will tear out the old ones, and then they just have to grade it with grass, backgrade it with grass. So a lot of coordination, but we have it figured out.
What is the, what is the eventual surface underneath the placegates going to be?
Uh, it's a combination of uh mulch, uh placegate mulch, as well as rubberized uh hard surfacing. I won't call it hard, but like a rubberized surfacing, so that um. The um special needs uh. Or anyone with the, you know, special a handicap student can get to a lot of the equipment.
All right, any other questions on the board? Okay, all in favor of this uh motion is submitted? I, any opposed? No, that one passes, thanks, Cliff, let's let us know how that goes tonight, please.
Very well, I will, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mitch.
Good morning.
Hi, Mitch.
We have an update on the employee contribution.
Thank you for working on my special project.
Okay.
Which became your special project.
That became my special project, so I had a long, after our last meeting, to bring everybody back up to date. There was a question as to why, when an employee starts, is their um decision to. Uh, how much they wanna put into the four oh one A plan irrevocable, the percentage that is. And so I had a long discussion after your request with um Mission Square, and. It it was a long discussion, but I'm hoping to bring it down to brass tacks here. The four oh one A has different um regulations than a four oh one K, most of it. Does mirror, but there's a couple of quirky things, and one of the things is that. If your uh employee contributions are voluntary. It's an irrevocable decision, most, and I'm told, almost all of the um, I'm sorry, nonvol-. Non voluntary, excuse me, if it's non voluntary, which means that they have to make a decision on going into the four oh one. So let's step back a second, when we put in our our pension plan, we made. We made sure that everyone had to contribute to the pension plan. And when we put in the four oh one A, we mirrored that. By saying that we want all employees to be invested in their retirement, the same way they were with the pension plan. So we made it a mandatory three percent, but you could go up to eight percent. And so that way it was at least the minimum that people were putting into a pension plan. For the older employees, the new employees would put in a minimum of three percent. So that way it is a mandatory or non voluntary plan. The plans where people are able to make those change contributions are when they are voluntary, which means that. You don't have to contribute at all, you can put in zero. Whether the company or the town matches or puts in any amount at all is irrelevant, it has to do with the employee's decision. So when the employee has a choice as to whether to participate or not. Therefore being voluntary, they can make that change. Most plans, I'm told, say, look. We're we're either voluntary or non voluntary, and when it's non voluntary, it's you put in six percent, we'll put in fifty percent of that. Or you put in five percent, we'll put a hundred percent of that. In our case, we said three to eight percent, and therefore making it a mandatory contribution. Of makes it something that you cannot change. So I hope I haven't confused you more, but hopefully try to straighten out the reason the IRS says it has to be a once uh this one time decision.
So the bottom line is, yeah, the bottom line is that it's it's what I was complaining about is, that's what it is.
Yes, and then your your second question last time was what can we do to change this? The only thing we can do to change that, we certainly can't change it for existing employees. We can change it for going forward if we were to, one, change our plan. But then make it voluntary, which says that you don't have to put in anything at all, you don't have to contribute towards retirement at all, and if we're gonna match a hundred percent. A hundred percent is zero zero, so we could have employees coming in saying. I don't want to put into a pension plan, then they have nothing, they could be here twenty, thirty years and then say. Where's my, where's my retirement plan? And we say, well, you decided not to do anything about it. And so that's what we were trying to avoid, is making sure that everyone who's a full-time employee. Has some sort of retirement plan, which I think was a wise decision on the Board of Select when we first put this in.
Want to say it after that comment, but I remember making that transition and that being, I would not be in favor of. Uh, of that being involved there.
All the recommendations and all the momentum is trying to force.
Yeah.
Smig, not forced, but so much.
Just, you know, make the right decision.
It encourages people to be involved.
And Mitch, you did tell me one thing that made me personally feel better, you said. When you meet with new employees and they have the option of somewhere between three and eight, but it's the one-time decision forever irrevocable, blah, blah, blah. You said most of the time, uh, you've, you kind of. Encourage them to go as high as they can towards the eight, and you said most people do go higher than three, is that correct?
That that's true, except that I was uh called out on that um in the last, since your last meeting, we had a new employee who decided to go in with six percent. Despite my encouragement. But, but yeah, nearly, nearly everyone puts in eight percent.
It to to go back to the other issue of why we made it voluntary is. We didn't want a situation where an employee did not have a pension.
Yeah, I get it.
That's what it comes down to, even if they start with one percent, you know. The town will match that, so.
Well, they can't, they have to start with three. No, just.
Even if the minimum, yeah.
Right, right.
If we didn't want to be in a situation where a town employee did not have a pension.
Right. Okay, well, I guess we've beaten this one to death, so, um, but thank you very much, at least. I won't ask this question anymore.
Don't don't promise that, but it's, thanks for digging into the esoteric four oh one A for us, thank you.
You got it, thank you.
That classic of the government, that.
Okay, so if Mitch has anything else, we'll move on to appointments and resignations. First item is we have a uh. Resignation Shirley Geroni from the Tree Advisory Board. Motion to accept with thanks and regret or whatever the phrase is.
After thirty years.
Yeah, impressive.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you Shirley, all in favor? And I guess the next part of that is a motion to appoint um Pat, the the captions are confusing.
Pat Capone.
Pat Capone is the, has the representative of the advisory board.
I mean, this doesn't go through the various uh unrecognized political parties, this is just a reason, one of the. Decisions that was made at some point that the Garden Club would have a representation on the Tree Advisory Board again.
Yeah, sounds like it. Okay.
They endorse this person.
So we're accepting Pat Capone as a representative for the Tree Advisory Board, all in favor? Okay, thank you, Pat. Next item, a request for use of town property, these both struck me as first little similar. Uh, and and interesting, the first one, I'll just read it, it's an act on a request from Martha Merrick Dance Studio to use the green for dance classes on July. In July and August twenty twenty two.
Have you ever struggled with this one before?
Well, we had something similar.
Yeah, it's a business.
So it is a business, they have paid staff, well, that that's.
And I was looking at the second request where Karen reminds the Pure Bar people that. Our rules say not for profit, and in both cases, I believe these are businesses, they're not gonna charge.
Yeah.
But we, we, but it does say that then, it looks like they have to pay a fee to use the green if they're not not for profit.
My problem is, it's a, it's a, it's a for-profit business, whether they're charging for that particular event.
Right, yeah.
Furtherance of the interest of, as commendable as those those might be, as well as the previous one we had.
Yep.
It's, it's contrary to the policy of belief that we have laid out for.
Previous one was more complicated because she actually wanted to charge people to come to the out, open air performance. And put a fence around it, got, he got even more complicated, these are a little more open-ended in that they're not um. Charging, but it kind of goes, I think, against the the current rules of the use of the green.
I don't think it's open, my 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 understanding is I read this, it feels like it would be their members who are presumably paying for their time.
Right, yeah.
Whether they do it inside or in this case outside, so I just caught my concern.
I agree, and and the other point is, I think the way the rule goes is that if you have less than forty people, you just. Just go, and you can get twenty five people to go dance on the green anytime you want to, it's just.
Yeah, but you couldn't necessarily throw down a dance floor.
Or restrict other people from.
Right.
Yeah, restrict that. And then the other thing I, the the Pure Bar people said they used to do, excuse me, down at Jacob's Beach, um. Which is also town property, so I wondered how that, maybe that was just like after at night or something.
Spontaneous thing.
Spontaneous, yeah, or that would be on it, so um.
Well, we have, right now, we have Arthur Murray, so let's handle those on their own, can I get a motion for Arthur Murray's request?
I'll make it based on the current rules of use of the green, which does not seem to fit, right? Unless they.
A motion, you're making it.
You're moving to deny the request?
Yeah.
Okay, I know, it's hard to say.
Or do we just not act, just? Motion in favor of it then?
I guess it dies that way as well.
Supposed to work, I don't know.
Well, maybe by making a motion to deny, we send the message that, no, we're just not gonna.
Yeah, before I make it, I'm willing to make it, but um. Do we convey that, again, that anybody on groups under forty can do this as long as it's open to anybody and not your classmates?
They could do, yeah. Whatever was.
Okay.
Proper or not proper, but in this case, for this specific request, um, we uh. Have a motion to deny, or we're just not gonna act?
I I think we're at the point that maybe we should make the motion to deny so that people have a clear understanding of.
I think we we moved to deny that request a year ago, so.
Yeah.
Uh, we might as well, I I moved to deny the request. Without prejudice or something. Just right, just based on the current policies of the use of the green, is that okay?
Sure.
Okay.
Basically, don't, not letting. Committee has not commented at all, right?
Right, I don't see that.
I I wouldn't, yeah.
Do we have a second, first, Sandy's motion?
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to deny, uh, and a second, uh, for Arthur Murray, any further discussion?
No, I, it. You know, this is probably a separate discussion from when Matt gets back, but maybe as a a policy or procedure. You know, these types of things don't even get here, I mean, it just, it's a no-no.
Yeah.
I suggested that at one point.
Yeah.
Response was that the selectors office would like us to be aware of them, but I, it seems to me that should be like the basic first step. If you don't meet the requirements of being a nonprofit organization or a town department.
Right.
That's, you know, sort of, that's it.
Right, so we don't mean to be pounding on either of these two entities, but it is before us, it's on our agenda. Yeah. We have a request to act, and we are moving, and again, to everybody's point, which is. Um, they can do their own homework, figure out what might be possible or not possible, but that doesn't have to necessarily be board business. Uh, here, but for this particular request, motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to deny? Okay, so then we have a second request, pure bar, and just by coincidence, I mean, it feels very similar. Um, I guess I understand that this is a private business. And they just want to hold some of their sessions on the green.
They only want one session, Arthur Murray wanted eight, yes.
Well. I mean, unless it was some sort of, I mean, if it's a session for their paid members. You can't quite tell, but I'm presuming from the way this looks. It feels similar.
Wait, this last sentence, you may also note that the regulations state that the green is to be used for Guilford nonprofit.
That's as Karen's. That's from Karen, yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's Karen.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry, yeah, okay.
All right, so we can also get a second, can we get a motion on this one?
Same as the last one, should I make that, I should say, somebody else.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, a second? Thank you. Any further discussion, this is not to to comment on the worth or not worth of this. Organization or what they're doing, but this particular use on the green feels in furtherance of a private business way, it's me. Uh, so, I mean, I'm I'm in favor of the motion to deny, I guess. Any further discussion, thoughts? All right, call for the vote, all in favor of the motion to deny? Okay, Mr. Massey, you've been here. Do you have something for us?
No, I'm just uh here to support with the uh ATV ordinance and noise ordinance, if there are any que- questions and. So here for the security discussion as well, so.
Terrific, well, thank you. So any committee reports, I'll run through the agenda.
Well, if, if.
Yeah, you wanna be here?
If you're here, I would like to hear what your thoughts are on that.
You can, we'll jump right to public court, but.
Yeah.
I actually don't have it in front of me either, so I was hoping that uh that was gonna be part of the discussion here today, and I was gonna. Try to engage the police department a little bit more in the discussion, where it's presented, but I'm gonna reach out to the county attorney right after this and.
Let me ask you this.
Copy, so.
Other than, you know. Conversations, et cetera, et cetera, uh, it's my understanding that we potentially have an issue. Especially in some of the the town-owned trails and land trust-owned trails that we have an issue developing. Uh, with ATVs and also I'm hearing bikes, is that right?
Yeah, and I, I wouldn't say it's a developing issue, it's it's been there for quite some time, um. I know a lot of towns have started pushing forward ordinances to deal with it, um, there's been some. Uh, legislation at the uh, at the state level, um, one of the House bills gave the towns the ability to pass ordinances that. Gives uh the local police departments a little bit more teeth to be able to enforce some of these issues, um. So North Branford is the one that passed an ordinance most recently, I I looked through that. Um, a little bit, and my understanding is ours is gonna mirror that, um, so police departments in support of. Pushing forward an ATV ordinance, because that does give us other avenues to be able to enforce what's going on. Uh, but it's certainly, it's not, it's not a problem that's unique to Guilford, it's uh, it's throughout the shoreline, throughout the state of Connecticut, and. Probably even further, uh, more widespread than that, but.
So there is no ordinance about them at this time?
We have, there's some state laws that that regulate the operation of ATVs on public roadways and also anywhere on private property that you don't have express permission. Um, to ride there, um, but in terms of enforcement and ordinance would give us. Um, some, certainly some more teeth to be able to, i- if we're taking enforcement, there's greater consequences, um. Also, one of the unique things in the North Branford ordinance that they presented was, there's actually um regulations. For gas stations that they can't allow those vehicles to fuel up there. So if somebody rides an ATV to the gas station and starts pumping it with gas, now the gas station. Attendant and the and the ownership there could be held liable for allowing that to happen. So it's, it's, there's a lot to it, so we're looking forward to to seeing what the uh, what the draft is really gonna look like and uh. You know, again, police department's gonna support that, we've, you know, we've had some preliminary discussions about it.
If if you.
Can we kind of skate ATVs at this point, Ted?
So part of what this is gonna allow, um, at least in looking at the North Branford. Uh, I guess I'll call it a model ordinance that we're basing, potentially basing ours off of is. Uh, you'd be able to tow that ATV from the scene and have it brought to a a record yard or impound lot and uh. There would be a release procedure for that, but it would be you're taking that vehicle off the road and.
What you're talking about, the proposed, I'm talking about now.
Uh, right now, we don't have a ordinance on that, so.
Okay, what about motorcycles? That same category?
Uh, we'd have to separate motorcycles that are, that are able to be operated on the road versus dirt bikes. Um, but my presumption is that the policy, if if it's an ATV ordinance, it would include uh dirt bikes as well. Uh, but again, we have to really take a look at what that.
So basically, would you say this, we need an ordinance to. To get this under control at this point, and it's unfortunate that people don't recognize it.
Yeah, it'd be very helpful to have, again, something that's uh, you know, the town ordinance gives us a, some more tools in our toolbox to be able to. Address some of these issues.
Is the basic rule, you've mentioned state statutes, is the basic rule, let's say town property, Timberlands or West Woods. Um, that an ATV could not go on those trails?
Yeah, they're not.
The default position?
Yeah, they're not supposed to be in there, um, but.
How do people know that?
I believe it's posted at the trailheads. So, but if you have somebody who's got an adjoining piece of property.
Yeah.
That is now riding into now what is town or conservation property. Um, you know, their their claim may be that they didn't know that they weren't permitted to go ride in there, um.
And in all candor, the discussion and the passing of an ordinance would help publicize that and it would help.
Certainly, there, that would be a component of it that.
First time you're gonna throw the book at them, but it's gonna give you a chance to say, well, this is it, and.
Yeah.
Don't tell us this next time. Is there any public lands that would, we would allow it, or is it gonna be basic?
No, and that's my same question.
Yeah, because I was thinking of like, a a long time ago, when skateboards became popular and kids were skating all over in um. Places that were dangerous to them and to others, and we built the skateboard park, I'm not saying that solved it, but we at least. Did provide a legitimate place for it, is there anything like that with ATMs? Those ATMs, sorry.
As as far as I'm aware, the only places that somebody would be able to legally ride in town are. Private property where the landowner has agreed for that operation of those vehicles on the property. I don't believe there's any town property, that would be a, something that the uh, the town would have to explore and and then obviously look into some of the other things like uh. Liability, if somebody is injured on the town property while, while riding.
Like a little Indian.
There's a lot more that would go into that.
Well, it's an important and helpful discussion. Good, but uh, good, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
You wanna say anything about the noise ordinance?
Uh, for diamond for a dollar.
Yeah, I I don't have that in front of me, so. Uh, my understanding from what was mentioned was just that they were talking about the construction times on the weekend, I don't know if there's any more that.
Had that before, too.
Gonna change.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks for being here.
No problem.
Great, um, okay, this brings us to committee reports, does anybody have anything cooking? Any correspondence? So old business. So old business, I actually stumbled on a couple notes, um can just get ready, and and last. Month we act, last meeting, we acted on the extending the cannabis moratorium and. And maybe this is just necessary when Matt gets back, but we were gonna hire, I thought we were gonna hire a contractor, the Zen City, does anybody have any idea whether that's happened?
Yeah, survey, yes.
Yeah, the survey's out.
It's been out for a long time.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if it's even open yet.
Though it was just on the town website, it was available, how do people get?
I got a, I got a direct email from them to take it.
Yeah, I got it too.
And we did talk about it because it didn't come out until close to the end of our first six months, which was one of the reasons for extending our.
I see.
Six months, because we all felt.
You said I get this.
So we wanted to, maybe you weren't at the meeting.
Yeah, I just.
Um that we wanted to be sure people knew about the survey and responded to it, and I remember when he, when that gentleman made the presentation, like it. I guess a year ago, almost, um he said there were ways to infiltrate all the demographics, remember, because that was.
Make sure it was.
We just, we wanted to be sure we heard from.
Yes.
Everybody, or at least a representational sample.
Yeah, the electronic format.
Eh you did the poll and then you could also make your own.
Sure, right, and then obviously, we're, they're gonna hopefully, I think, as part of the engagement with them, they're gonna give us this breakdown, you know, what of, who said what, sorry, yeah.
So the good news is, it's in process, sounds like you're really aware of it, okay, good.
I'm aware of it.
Uh I don't think they're gonna give us who said what, they're gonna.
No, I didn't mean, no, I didn't mean names, I meant um just results, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Tracy, do you have any knowledge of how many people have answered that survey?
You know, Sandy, we had a meeting with them, um the survey closed, and they gave us um an overview, Matt, Karen and I, it was before I left for vacation. Don't recall the exact numbers, but they they were pretty big.
They were pretty big, okay.
Reports on its way.
Yeah, definitely, we'll we'll forward it to you.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you.
The other, the other one is more in the nature of new business for me, it seems like we have a lot of affordable housing projects going on, and I I I, this is, this is getting something. Out of here, so I'll just keep piling work on them. I I I really would be helpful, I think, to to address the tour.
Oh, tour, okay, but I'm gonna, I'm I'm also, gonna, we're in the fall, we're gonna have a presentation. Hopefully um of private and um. Town organized and non or, you know, um. An informational meeting for the public about what's happening in Guilford regarding affordable house, that's what I'm trying to say.
Yes.
And it will be probably sponsored by the selectmen slash um planning and zoning, and we can have it like at a place like the library, because it's just gonna be. And oh, it's not gonna be a vote or anything, it's just gonna be an informational, could be a, could be at the parking rec too. So I just have to follow up with Jamie and get a date for that, and then we're gonna invite. Um the people that are doing these things, and I, maybe if she has contacts, invite people who might wanna do something, you know?
Yeah, good.
Um but but a tour would be nice, too.
A tour would be very helpful, just because, there's no different, there's no substitute for land use things, for physically staying someplace.
Right, it's good.
Anyway, thank you for everything.
Anyway, another piece of that, I don't know if it's appropriate for. What you're talking about or you're committed to do is to get input from people that have a, the opportunity to 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 live in those. Projects.
We did, you know, it was interesting when we had that hearing um just before COVID, when we had that hearing to transfer the town property for the one that we hope to have soon, with her. People actually offered stories that night, I don't know if any of you were there, that was when three hundred people came out. And um people just voluntarily got up and said, I lived in it such and such, and this, you know, they did, I mean, it was, it was interesting, it was not something we expected, but it was.
Yeah, I I'm not necessarily looking at having that discussion uh about. Whether or not we should do projects and and that type of thing, but more about. What my experiences have been in them and what we can do to improve future ones, that type of thing.
I need to take this back to Jamie. Town manager.
So unless anybody else has any other new business, old business, any left on public forum, no, thank you, everybody, and uh motion to return.
So, well, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good meeting, thank you, everyone, for indulging my.
Good job.
Process.
Stop looking at your notes.